Hearings called order. This is the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole. The purpose of this hearing is to take testimony on Resolution 170912. Mr. Christmas, would you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution 170912 authorizing the Committee of the Whole to hold hearings regarding Philadelphia's Amazon HQ2 proposal.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank my colleagues for being here for this important Council Committee of the Whole conversation on this resolution regarding the Amazon HQ2 proposal. That was really a great opportunity to see the city from a public-private perspective really come together to focus on this proposal. From my observation, I think the observation of many, this is a real moonshot moment here for the city of Philadelphia. In fact, just earlier today, myself as well as Council members Alan Dom, Councilman Janie Blackwell, and Councilman David O., were all at the Global Philadelphia Luncheon. And for many people may know that the city of Philadelphia is the only world heritage city in the United States. So the fact that we are a world heritage city, the fact that we're able to host the NFL Draft, and also host the RNC and DNC conventions, really show that the fact that Philadelphia is really on the map regarding a number initiatives. And the fact that we're able to come together to put together this proposal really provides an opportunity to look at best practices on how we're able to develop this proposal for the Amazon HQ2. And how can we use this same type of energy and initiative and drive to focus on some of the other issues we have in the city of Philadelphia? And that was the purpose of this resolution, this conversation. I look forward to hearing from those who are willing to testify this morning, and also thinking about how we can take this energy and drive to move forward on other things that plague and challenge our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We will have two panels testifying today. Our first panel is Sylvie Howard, Chief of Staff, Deputy Department of Commerce; Eleanor Sharp, the Executive Director of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission; and Vaughn Ross, Deputy Chief of Staff to the Kenny Administration. I would ask you all to please come forward.
Good afternoon.
You all can self-select in terms of who will be first.
Sure, I'll start. Good afternoon, Council President, Councilman Green, and members of City Council. My name is Vaughn Ross, and I serve as Deputy Chief of Staff to Mayor Kenny, and I'm here to testify on Resolution 170912. I'm here to speak about the city of Philadelphia's bid to secure Amazon's second headquarters, known as HQ2. In my role as Deputy Chief of Staff, I work frequently with the departments represented here today, specifically the Departments of Commerce and Planning and Development. To that end, when Amazon released their RFP in September, I became one of the core team members, dedicated to helping the city of Philadelphia submit our best response. The core team was chaired by Harold Epps, Commerce Director, and John Grady, President of PIDC. They represented here today by Sylvie Galleier Howard and Ann Nevins, the daily taskmasters of our team. We were also joined by representatives of the Planning and Development Department, the City Law Department, the PHL-CVB, Visit Philly, Campus Philly, Select Greater Philadelphia, and the Chamber of Commerce, and a diverse cast of local consultants. To recap for members of this committee, Amazon's RFP was released on September 7th, and the deadline for all submissions was October 19th. Within that RFP, Amazon provided details on their HQ2 plans, including their intention to locate 50,000 workers, an eventual build-out of 8 million square feet within the next 15 years, and their expectation to make over $5 billion in capital expenditures. In order to be eligible for that bid, the following requirements must be met. The metro area must have a population greater than 1 million people; there must be mass transit on-site; there must be access to top tech talent; close proximity to an international airport with direct flights to a number of cities, including Seattle; and we must provide a list of available incentives; we must have a stable, business-friendly environment; and finally, have development-ready sites. Immediately after the RFP was announced, we received many offers of help and support from a variety of sectors. We began a strategy of engaging stakeholders in the tech community, chambers of commerce, nonprofit sector, and elected officials. We knew that advocacy by a wide-ranging group would be critical, and to that end, the resolution passed by the City Council was well-received by Amazon staff. As the core team began to assemble, we adopted one of Amazon's core principles: customer obsession. We began hosting our weekly core team meetings in true Amazon style, with silent reading time, an Amazon tradition that allows those in the meeting a period of time to read all the necessary materials relevant. Additionally, we tasked each member of the core team to come prepared with a fact about Amazon or its founder, Jeff Bezos, on an attempt to inform our response as much as possible. Utilizing this research, we developed four key messages: location, affordability, access to talent, and quality of life. We believe that all the cities bidding for Amazon possess some of these qualities, but that no other city possessed all of these qualities in as great a quantity as Philadelphia. Our pitch to Amazon emphasized our location in the Northeast Corridor, the affordability -- the ability to recruit from a vast talent pool from 100 universities within our region, and the affordability of our region compared to New York, Boston, DC, and Seattle while providing a similar quality of life as those locations. This pitch was strengthened by three shovel-ready sites that we featured. Those are Skuggel Yards and University City Square in University City, and the Navy Yard in South Philadelphia. These sites met much of Amazon's criteria for an initial 500,000-square-foot footprint with an availability to grow to 8 million square foot thereafter. Using this pitch, we created a written response, our interactive website, five videos, and letters of support from this City Council, the county commissioners of all the counties of the metro area, 160 corporate leaders, and 65 college and university presidents. The final products created in those six weeks are a true testament to the talent of our community and the power of collaboration. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about the great work we were able to accomplish in such a short period of time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark and members of City Council. My name is Sylvie Galleier Howard, and I serve as Chief of Staff to the Department of Commerce. I am also a member of the core team that spent six weeks developing the Amazon bid, and I'm here today to share with you some of the important takeaways we garnered from the process to provide an overview of plans we are developing to leverage this opportunity regardless of Amazon. The Amazon RFP was explicit about numerous priorities and drivers that would influence their decision. Some of the elements that Amazon highlighted were talent, a stable and friendly business environment, immediate access to mass transit, direct flights to key locations, cost of doing business, size of the market, an MSA of more than 1 million, livability, and incentives. One of the things we determined as we went through this list was that Philadelphia is one of the few cities, as Vaughn said, with a combination of all these things. Some cities have more talent, others are rated as more business-friendly, but we had a hard time finding another large city with access to such a large talent pool in such a prime location with the transportation infrastructure and amenities that we have, and on top of all that, exceptionally affordable. This unique combination is the reason why Philadelphia experienced such an unprecedented show of support and confidence from the community. We truly deliver what Amazon needs. The Amazon process also reinforced some of what we already knew and validated, some of the activities upon which we are already embarking. While Philadelphia has so much promise and so much to offer, there are areas where we know that we can do better. Stable and business-friendly environment. While the city has made steady progress in reducing wage and business taxes, we still have a much more costly tax environment than many other cities. Our affordability helps to keep our cost of doing business lower than some of our more expensive Northeast peers, but there are also many other cities in the U.S. that are affordable and/or have a much lower tax burden. Quality public schools. While we do have some top-notch public schools, our struggling public education system is an impediment for fostering a qualified workforce and for attracting businesses. With talent being one of the primary drivers for business decisions, it is critical that schools ensure a highly educated and prepared workforce in the future. Quality schools are also very important for attracting and retaining employees with families. Unified messaging and branding. The Amazon bid mobilized an effort to pitch the city around one set of talking points and one brand: Philadelphia Delivers. Having a shared value proposition and a strong brand that every person, business, and organization can use to market Philadelphia is a definite need and an immediate goal. The team that worked on this proposal, and everyone in the community that supported it, wanted to guarantee Philadelphia wins regardless of the final location of HQ2. To this end, the same Amazon HQ2 core team will collaborate to perfect our strategy for promoting Philadelphia as a prime location by promoting a consistent and compelling and globally resonant message, building upon the web, video, and mapping assets used for the Amazon bid. During the process of establishing a more permanent Philadelphia brand for attracting more business, talent, visitors, and investment, we will continue to use the Philadelphia Delivers brand and site, making some tweaks so it is not focused on Amazon. Regarding the other challenges enumerated above, the recent decision by the School Reform Commission and the mayor to take local control of the schools is an opportunity we must seize to infuse curricula and experiential learning opportunities that will better prepare our young people for the rapidly changing 21st century economy, including tech, artificial intelligence, robotics, and more. Early next year, the mayor will release a workforce strategy for the city, which establishes ambitious and far-reaching goals and will require the support of every sector of our economy, public and private. To conclude, all of these efforts, education, workforce, and business development combined, are necessary to move the needle in reducing our poverty rate and to further the momentum that the city is experiencing. If we are successful in attracting Amazon, it would be a game changer for Philadelphia. And while there would be some negative effects, the benefits can and should far outweigh the costs. This process has reaffirmed that Philadelphia is a world-class city, and in being such, we are a city that competes for opportunities like this head-on, a city that develops smart, evidence-based strategies to mitigate potential negatives, and a city that makes sound business decisions to ensure that all Philadelphians receive maximum benefit.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark, Councilmember Green, and members of City Council. I am Eleanor Sharp, Executive Director of the Philadelphia City Planning Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this afternoon to testify on Resolution Number 170912. Hosting Amazon's second headquarters in Philadelphia is an exciting prospect. The process of preparing the application brought together the private, philanthropic, and public sectors to create an outstanding response to Amazon's RFP on behalf of the city and the Greater Philadelphia region. I would like to touch on what the impact of Amazon in Philadelphia might be for the city and the region, but before that, it is important to note the underlying differences between our city and Seattle, and hence some potential differing impacts. It is important to note that Philadelphia, Seattle, and their respective regions are different in significant ways, and impacts here will likely not be the same as those that have or are perceived to have taken place in Seattle. One major difference is the size of our respective regions. Philadelphia's labor and transportation market is a 12-county region with approximately 6.4 million people. The Seattle metro area has about 3.8 million people. We believe this means that the effects of a single, large, and steadily growing employer can be more readily absorbed in Philadelphia's larger marketplace. Another difference is that the entire Seattle metropolitan statistic area, or MSA, grew at a rate of about 21% between 2006 and 2016, adding approximately 450,000 jobs. By contrast, in those same 10 years, our region grew about 8%, adding about 290,000 jobs. To us, this suggests that Greater Philadelphia has capacity to handle Amazon's projected build-out without shocking the area's markets and infrastructure. A positive impact we expect should Amazon locate its second headquarters here would be jobs created at many levels of the economic spectrum. Much of the discussion about Amazon has focused on technological and professional positions that will pay salaries well above the average jobs in Philadelphia. However, it's important to remember that HQ2's arrival would also create jobs in a range of other job classifications: construction, administration, maintenance, and other occupations at varying skill levels. The new headquarters is proposed to grow in phases to 50,000 direct jobs, beginning in 2019 and into the 2030s. We estimate that over time, this would also generate a total of more than 60,000 new, indirect, supporting jobs. This would bring a total to about 110,000 jobs, or over the time period, perhaps 7,000 additional jobs per year. We believe that this is very manageable, as the region has already averaged more than 35,000 additional wage and salary jobs each year over the past five years. And 7,000 new Amazon-related jobs would represent only a 20% increase in the region's annual job growth, and only 0.2% of the total job market. While the direct jobs are likely to locate within the city, a number of the indirect jobs could be based outside the city. Accordingly, the city might need to accommodate perhaps 80,000 of the total 110,000 direct and indirect jobs. This could translate into about 5,000 jobs per year, which would be significant, but not an overwhelming increase for our city. In each of the past two years, Philadelphia has already welcomed more than 10,000 additional jobs. Some of the additional employment would attract new households and population to the city, but also to the region. We estimate that HQ2 in Philadelphia could translate into 30,000 to 40,000 additional households throughout the city, and perhaps 90,000 to 100,000 additional city residents over time. A similar number of households and population would probably be attracted to homes and communities in the neighboring counties. Based on the Seattle experience, many of the new households that would locate in a city would want to live within a convenient walk, transit trip, or bike ride to their Amazon facilities. That would undoubtedly put housing pressures on the neighborhoods closest to the new headquarters. However, there are implementable strategies to reduce those pressures and to reduce the impact of those pressures. One strategy is to increase the number of locations that offer an easy transit rate to headquarters. We can accomplish this in one way by promoting transit-oriented development through legislation such as the bill recently introduced by Councilmember Blackwell for 46 Unmarked Streets. The more transit options that are available to deliver a worker to a job site, the lower the housing pressure on the neighborhoods immediately adjacent to that job site. More transit-oriented development would accomplish this goal for all of Philadelphia's job holders and job seekers, not just those who will work for Amazon. We can also take steps to protect the current residents of neighborhoods around the city, and many of these strategies are already in place. Tax relief programs such as the home set exemption and loop help minimize property tax increases for longtime homeowners in rapidly appreciating markets. Home repair programs, recently ramped up with revenue identified by City Council, help low-income residents stay in their homes. The city has programs to help residents with utility bills, to prevent foreclosures and evictions, and to maximize participation in programs such as earned income tax credit. Our challenge here is not coming up with new and inventive programs, but rather ensuring that everyone eligible for these programs that already exist are enrolled. We also agree with City Council that we can leverage market-rate housing and housing development in support of more affordable housing options. We believe that Amazon locating its headquarters in Philadelphia would be good for the city. Let me repeat that. Amazon locating its headquarters in Philadelphia would be good for the city. It would mean jobs for both existing and new residents. Those residents will shop in our commercial corridors, eat in our restaurants, coach in our youth leagues, and strengthen our neighborhoods. They will pay property taxes that will support our schools, and so will their employers. It will also help change the narrative of Philadelphia. We're growing, jobs and people. We're the best city in America for millennials. We're an ads and meds powerhouse, and we have growing, even booming, entrepreneurial and tech sectors. Amazon here will help us share that story with the rest of the world. Amazon locating its headquarters in Philadelphia will also bring challenges. We are, however, well-equipped to face them. Thank you for your interest in this important issue, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Chair recognizes Councilman Green for questioning.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you all for your testimony. You kind of gave a lot of information regarding some of the strategies and outcomes of this proposal, but I'm curious about the details of how this collective did its work. Like, how did you -- when you -- when the administration decided to apply for HQ2, what was the process?
So basically, as soon as the RFP came out, we grouped together the next day, and, you know, we decided that day that we were going to go for it, and we assembled a core team.
And the "we," the "we" that grouped together?
The "we," so, sorry. So Harold Epps, John Grady, we pulled in PHL-CVB, Visit Philly, Campus Philly, and, you know, a number of different departments from the city, Select, were all represented in that. So, a lot of the groups already do attraction for the city. We pulled them all together, and we basically assembled weekly meetings, and we got what we called a war room. And so there was a group of folks that was working on the proposal every day, basically going to that war room, working on the proposal, doing research. We had a team of consultants that was helping us with gathering data, scrubbing the data, and then we engaged the creative team to work on the website, the videos, the mapping tools. So that was the process.
And so going through that initiative, were there any specific things that jumped out at you on that collaborative effort, based on the fact this were -- in this situation, you had institutions and individuals coming together in a unique way?
Yeah, absolutely. So we work together a lot, but this was the first time that we were all, or at least the first time in a long time, and in this way that we were working with one kind of large, common goal and a very, very short timeframe and deadline. So it definitely helped to galvanize us. It helped for us to each kind of figure out our core niche in terms of the process, and it was definitely a partnership-building opportunity, and it created a lot of collaboration.
Considering some of the issues that we have in the city, I know with the Amazon proposal, you had a finite timeline to complete the work. Can you see this type of work in this collaborative way be used for other type of issues? If you said we're going to have a goal or timeline of coming up with a proposal, strategy, or concept for this issue, and we set a hard deadline, is there a ability to kind of replicate this type of work again?
Yes. So, we already decided that we're going to continue to meet as a group on a monthly basis to work towards continuing to promote the city and developing tools that are not just structured for Amazon or focused for Amazon, but in the long run. We'd actually started to work together and meeting regularly around a marketing initiative and coming up with core value proposition and a brand for Philadelphia, and this Amazon process just kind of catapulted us into a process of coming up with something on an interim basis really quickly. You know, some of us were kind of working our full-time jobs on top of this, so I don't think we'd be able to necessarily do that, you know, repeatedly at that level, but definitely we could do a lot of things together.
Would it make sense going forward if there was maybe someone designated or within administration or other that would focus on like public-private partnerships, because all of you have specific roles in administration, but having some person that could keep the trains running on a either public-private partnership or others have initiatives, would that be something that's beneficial?
I think it's something we could explore. I mean, I think that we definitely -- we have a business attraction unit, and we tried to let them continue to do, you know, all the other business attraction work that they already had, but I think it's something we could explore.
Okay. I know there's been some conversation about some of the financial incentives that the city and/or state were possibly providing, and from my understanding, a non-disclosure agreement was signed by both the city and state regarding that information. There had been some concerns about with various incentive programs or initiatives that are done at the local or state level. If that entity receiving those financial incentives don't meet certain goals, should we have steps going forward, like either clawbacks or other type of concepts going forward?
So, the incentives at the end of the day, what's in the proposal is confidential, and part of that, we generally don't share that information because it's -- we're in a process of negotiation and a competitive process. But whatever we end up with will have to be legislated, whether it's the state incentive piece or the city incentive piece, so it'll all be public at that point, once we're at that point in the discussion. And we always work to find, you know, that there's an impact in return for those incentives, which typically is jobs, and for future investment, future revenue for the city.
In your testimony, you also talked about, for example, Philly delivers having one brand, and I think one of the challenges I've seen, both through being a member of this body, as also as co-chair of the special committee on regulatory form and review, and just from my own experiences as either a small business lender or attorney representing businesses, that we have a number of different programs in the city, and the challenge is that people don't necessarily know about those programs, because we don't have a consistent brand. And then often sometime from a legislative body perspective, we come up with a new either tax credit or new initiative, but we have a whole slew of other initiatives, some that are not being as utilized. What can we, as a city, do to do a better job of packaging that information so people know about some of the programs we have in a whole host areas, not just economic development, but also for people that have issues with housing or other aspects?
So, well, with regards to attraction and information for bringing new residents, new -- more talent, more businesses, we are looking to continue having -- so the Philadelphia delivers site right now is really tailored towards Amazon, but it's the kind of the only site that exists. It's not a particular organization's site, it's sort of a site for Philadelphia that different organizations share. So we do want to continue having something like that, that would be sort of connect to different agencies related to, you know, different types of services or opportunities that are available. So that could be one of the mechanisms.
The reason I raise that is that I think one of the challenges is that we have a number of different programs in the city, but too often, people don't know about them. And I think the challenge is that, you know, we are a city with limited resources, and this goes back to, you know, my days in the law department, representing office housing community development. Should we spend the limited resources on the marketing so people know about it, or spend the money on the program itself? And normally, we do the latter, and we spend the money on the program to deliver the services, but then people don't know about the program. So this is catch-22. People may not know about basist and repair programs, or they may not know about the storefront program or in-store program. And so, the limited group of people that know about these programs tend to take advantage of the services, or they have someone as an expediter or someone that's kind of within the system that gets in that information. But we have a number of small businesses or homeowners and others who never hear about these programs, because we focus on delivering the programs and save our resource for that when there seems to be a need to do a better job of marketing and gain information out. Has there been any conversations, maybe coming out of the Amazon conversation, of how we can partner with either for-profit entities or others that can help us, you know, do some of the marketing of these initiatives that we have in the city to kind of get the word out? Because I think that's one of the challenges, that we have all these different initiatives, and we keep coming up with new ideas and concepts, but people are not using some of the older versions and the older things we have.
I think there's been some of that conversation, mostly around attraction efforts and retention efforts. So, I do want to say that we have, on the philadelphia.gov website, business.phila.gov, and all of you should use that as a resource, we have a link on there to all of our handouts that have -- a lot of them are newly designed. We do partner with our CDCs and business associations, and we let -- we inform them of all the materials that we have, but I think you're right, you know, one central place that has all types of programs, including housing and those types of things, I don't think that currently exists, and we haven't probably talked about it in that broader scope.
I am aware that as part of an application, there is an effort to sort of unify and have a one-form Philadelphia that has a lot of this information, and at the Department of Planning and Development, we're also looking at how do we get the word out about the host of multiple programs that we do have? So it is a continuing conversation, but there's nothing that's been sort of decided at this point in time, but it is valid. And it's a balance to like, do we spend the money on the programs, or do we spend it on marketing for the programs? There's just a tipping point that needs to be figured out there.
And I know some other members of the council have some questions, so I'll close with this last question. How will we, if we were to be selected by Amazon for their HQ2, what steps would we take to prepare? Talked about the number of households that may be coming in to the city of Philadelphia. I know right now, we're at a building boom that we've never seen in the history of the city, just from an LNI perspective, and some of the conversation we've had as part of the special committee, it's been a challenge in navigating LNI. So we had a situation where Amazon came to the city of Philadelphia, and you're going to have certain neighborhoods possibly explode even more than they're already exploding, which is going to have an impact for long-term residents, as well as those who are trying to move into the city. And so how would we kind of work with either the organization, Amazon Corporation, or just others coming to the city? How would we prepare for that type of situation? Especially considering some of the issues you, you know, raised in testimony, and some of the impacts it's had in Seattle. I've had conversations -- raised in testimony and some of the impacts it's had in Seattle. I've had conversations with members of National League of Cities, and they've kind of talked about what's happened in Seattle over the years, pre-Amazon to now.
Yeah.
That's had a major impact on just the, the city as a whole and the people that work in the city, those who work for Amazon, and those who work for small businesses who have to commute, you know, hours to get and work in the city. So, how will we even prepare considering some of those issues?
I just want to say that especially after our trip, we all went to Seattle to get a better sense of how HQ1 is embedded in the city. And they have a large, I think they have one of the largest commuter times on record, which I think it's about 90 minutes, maybe. And it's just based on their simple geography, and they don't have as much mass transit as we do. So, we don't anticipate a similar, we don't, we anticipate that there will be some impacts, and some of them perhaps may be negative, but we don't anticipate how Seattle has sort of weathered the storm to be the same issues that we will be dealing with. We have one of the second to Boston, I believe. We have the second shortest commuter rate of major cities. So, we don't have that issue. We don't anticipate that 50,000 households would descend on the city within, in the next year, and that the growth rate of accommodating 5,000 workers and in the direct jobs, perhaps per year, and the other ones, is something that we can manage. And we have the heads up. We have Seattle as an example of what not to do. So, those are issues that we're well aware of. We have programs to maintain our existing, and I brought a handout, if you want, of all the programs that the Department of Planning and Development does have on the books to ensure that our residents are protected as our city continues to grow, because all we're going to do is manage the growth and make sure that existing residents are not displaced or negatively impacted.
And one thing I'd like to, I'd like to add to that is, is that a lot of the feedback we've heard in the time after we submitted is that we must ensure that community involvement is a big piece of, of anything if Amazon were to come here. And I think the administration would be committed to that, not just after a decision is made, but leading up to that, because I don't think we, I, I think Amazon wants to come to a place that's a neighborhood, that's a real, that's a real community. And we wouldn't want to this, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to just leave communities out of the actual discussion before that happened.
And the planning commission is experts at holding those kind of discussions.
Thank you, Councilman. Your internal public hearing clock is right on point, 10 minutes. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. President. Good afternoon. Thank you for the work effort and work product that went into the final submission. Often, we hear the general criticism that Philadelphia is not business-friendly. Break that down into manageable parts. What does that mean? How do you believe we stack up with other cities that you would deem to be more business-friendly than Philadelphia?
So, it breaks down into our tax environment. So, our business taxes, our wage tax are certainly, they work against us in our situation. In terms of looking at the entire country, Philadelphia falls more or less in the middle in terms of, you know, we're kind of right in the middle in terms of our business friendliness. This is according to indices that, you know, experts look at our business, our cost of doing business, our business friendliness.
Can you, pause right there. Can you get, see, provide for us that document, that evidence that says that?
Sure.
To the chair so that we can actually see that?
Absolutely. Sure. Yeah.
Okay. And, and has the department ever done a comparative grid where you list the top 10 cities that are doing well, and you show the, the type of taxes they have, business taxes that they have, so that visually, we can see where, where we are and where we need to get to, who we need to model after?
Yes, yes. We, we looked at that, and we can get that, too, absolutely. The, and part of what those experts take into consideration is the work that you all do as well. So, legislation, our business tax environment, and the general cost of doing business, so real estate. And so, we do well in terms of that. You know, our real estate, the cost of, of leasing and purchasing real estate is lower here than in, at least with our Northeast peers and also a lot of our West Coast peers. So, we, in terms of the, in the Northeast, you know, in, in general, Philadelphia is not, we don't have a great reputation for being business-friendly.
Well, we know we don't have the reputation, but we, we want to, you know, what's the evidence that backs and supports that?
Sure, sure.
And I think, I think one of the things we found out during, during this process is that compared to our Northeast peers, we were actually, had a fairly good, we had a fairly good business environment compared to like a New York or a Boston states that also had similar taxes that we did. It was, when you, when you looked at cities in Texas or cities in the Sun Belt that maybe didn't have state income taxes, that made big differences in the business environments.
Okay. Was there any ask, any inquiries regarding MBE/WBE participation? Was there any discussion in the proposal sent by the city on the prevailing, will-not-go-away issue on diversity and participation?
So, we certainly highlighted Philadelphia as a majority-minority city as part of our proposal, and we talked about the fact that that was something that we could offer in terms of there being a large number of minority businesses and also talent for, for Amazon to be able to hire here in the city. There wasn't really, in terms of-
Was there an ask on their end for that?
No. They, they did talk about diversity being one of their priorities, but there wasn't, there wasn't any ask.
So, they talked about it, but they, they didn't ask how well is our city doing in that way?
No. No, they didn't.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just check to make sure I got, got through all of my questions. Think that, that, any discussion around the issue of housing and how Seattle has basically transformed itself in a way where low and moderate-income housing does not exist in the downtown sector?
Yeah. We, we discussed that. We talked about it a lot. The, Seattle's population, Seattle's metropolitan population is about 3 million. Seattle's as a city, I think the population is-
It's about 800,000?
Yeah.
In a, in a square mileage, about, pretty similar to Philadelphia, actually.
Pretty similar to Philadelphia. So, in terms of land space and their land development, it's, it's a different geographical setup than ours. The luxury that we have is that we're on the north, we're in the Northeast, and not only is our city, our city was planned to be built out to accommodate 2.5 million people, and we just never got there. We were at 2 million, and then we decreased to 1.5 million. So, the city fabric itself has the capacity to accommodate more people within our city limits. The advantage that Philadelphia has in our location is not only can the city itself accommodate growth, but to accommodate the varying housing typologies that we anticipate that Amazon employees would want. There are people who would want to live in the heart of downtown. There are people who might want to live up in the mountains, live out by the beach. That the city has these options within our region, but we also have the transportation infrastructure to get folks from these surrounding areas within our city. So, we don't anticipate that all of the Amazon workers are going to come and just plot down in our city and transform it like Seattle, that has happened in Seattle, that the region in itself can absorb. And our housing prices are lesser than in other cities, and we're sure that coming here, it will affect some of the, the rates of housing. And that's why the Planning and Development Department is focused on making sure we maintain affordable housing for our existing residents. So, we have talked about it, and it's a continuing discussion. But we, we don't fear what happened in Seattle, and we have steps in place.
We don't, what?
Fear. We're not afraid that what happened in Seattle will necessarily happen in Philadelphia.
There are a lot of takeaways, however, from what Seattle did not get right when it comes to-
Yes, exactly. And Seattle is ahead of us, so we can always learn from them.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So, do you have any, it's, I'm trying to talk and speak, think at the same time. Does each site independently have the capacity to grow to 8 million square feet? Do you know if each site has the capacity to do that?
Yeah. So, we identified a number of sites in the proposal specifically, but if Amazon were to choose us, we're presenting the city as a whole, and they can also look to locate, negotiate with them how to locate. But the three sites that we highlighted in of itself, I think each can provide the initial 500,000 square feet that they would want in their first year, with a potential development up to the 8 million square feet of their build-out over the next 15 years. So, yes.
Do you believe that Philadelphia gave away the farm to try to win Amazon?
No. I don't, I don't.
No. And I, and I think it's important to say that what we did was we responded to an RFP. So, what we did is we entered into the competition. At this point, we haven't given anything. We've really just responded as-
Okay.
In addition to the other 237 cities or MSAs that responded, and so, we're in the mix. We're in, we're in the mix, and-
And we haven't heard anything. We don't know where we are in the mix.
Yeah. I mean, some of these polls out there have said that we're in the top 10, but this is all speculation. It's, it's just people coming up, you know?
Hearing means nothing.
And it's because, you know, I think it's because our bid looked good, and so, now, maybe, you know, maybe people wouldn't even have thought of Philadelphia otherwise.
Okay. Thank you all for your work effort.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon. First, I want to thank Commerce Department, PIDC, for what, from where I stood, I thought you guys did a great job on this proposal. But I understand there's 238 applications in what you could call this beauty contest, and I hope we win it. But in case we don't, it always goes back to an old rule of business that it costs you five to 10 times to attract a new customer as to keep an existing customer. And so, all this great work that we've done together, I'm joining my colleagues' comments on how do we take that work and address the current business environment we're in and make it more friendly? We already know that people complain about the BERT taxes, business income receipt taxes. There are other issues, but how do we do it in a revenue-neutral format? And my question is, can this consortium of people who've gotten together come back to this body with five to 10 recommendations, revenue-neutral, that will make us in the more top tier of being business-friendly without losing revenue? And we would like to hear what those ideas might be.
Sure. So, so, you know, the Commerce Department, we do business attraction and retention, and when we hear that leases are coming up, we go and we visit those companies, and we sort of do this work of retaining. And when we hear, there are RFPs that are never this public that come to us, and we respond to them. So, we, we certainly will continue to do that work. As you all probably know, Mayor Kenny is now going out. We have the Philadelphia Delivers campaign. He's visiting different businesses or groups of businesses to talk about how much we value them being here and the employment that they create. And this group will definitely continue to work together. I think we fostered a really strong working relationship. We'll certainly come together. We'd be happy to, to brainstorm 10 ideas or more.
We have as a city, a marketing problem. And that is that if you ask most residents or business people in the city, they would probably tell you that Philadelphia is the number-one least-friendly business environment in the country. Okay? They would say that. But according to what you just said to us, we're in the middle. And maybe that information has to be marketed better and put out there, and people see that, that we're not the, you know, we're in the middle. We're trying to get better, but we're in the middle. I mean, being in the middle is much better than being at the bottom. So, I think, I think we don't do a great job in getting the positive things about the city out there, and that's one statistic that we should make sure we promote. It's very important. Is that, would that be the Commerce Department that could promote that?
Yes. And that, yeah. So, we absolutely are going to continue. We had actually started this process of kind of having a branding, a branding process, and we will continue, as I said before, we'll continue to use the Philadelphia Delivers for a while because we actually have entered into, we just responded to an RFP for a global branding process. And if we get into that, we'll go through a 10-month process of hearing from some experts that will pull data on how we're perceived internationally, and we think that'll help us in terms of creating a brand. But we, we plan on having a, a strategy, a value proposition, talking points, and branding that will last for a long, long time that we can all use. And certainly from this process, we learned that there's a lot of things that we're really, really good at and exceptional at, and we're, and especially affordability in terms of, we're the second-largest city on the East Coast. I know we're the sixth-largest city, but we're second-largest on the East Coast, and we're way more affordable than our peers and our larger peers. So, I think that's something we need to really tap.
And so, the, the question I have is, can I get that chart about the business-friendly that shows the top 20 cities and where we actually sit? I think it'd be helpful for this committee, or this council, to see that chart.
Yes, I'll share that.
And the other is, I, I saw the video that you put together on Amazon. I thought it was phenomenal. And I did ask if it's possible to make that video available, but rebrand it, take out all the Amazon pieces, and just make it a video on selling Philadelphia, because it's one of the best videos I've seen on selling our city. Is that, is that happening?
That is.
That is happening.
Yeah. We're, we're, actually, that's part of our interim process, is that we're going to de-amazonify that video and also that site. And then, in the future, we hope to have, we have a ton of footage from the 32, 33 interviews that we did. You'll be hearing later from our creative director, Rikiya Reynolds. And so, we plan to use that, you know, potentially for something more long-term, maybe with some more images of the city. But absolutely, we'll, we'll use that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to just follow up on some of the things that Councilman Dom was talking about, you know, and it's how, we've had this conversation about business marketing. I know we're now moving forward on that regard and having a more uniform branding aspect. But I think part of the issue of this, and this goes also to some of the things that Councilman Blind O'Reilly's brand also talked about, that we don't do a, a good enough job of promoting the good aspects that we have as a city. I've shared this anecdote quite a bit. I get up on a very ungodly hour to work out. And so, for a number of years, I was seeing the New York State of Business Opportunity, State of Opportunity commercials during ESPN. And basically, New York is focusing and marketing all the great dynamics they have in their state and showing millennials opening a business in Poughkeepsie, New York, or X, Y, Z, and always marketing and promoting New York State as a place to start your business. And I think we don't do that enough. When you look at the colleges and universities we have in the greater Philadelphia region, you look at the cost of living in the city of Philadelphia compared to other cities between Boston and DC. You look at our real estate values, both to live here, all the cultural amenities we have in the city, and we don't really take that information and market and package it to either entrepreneurs interested in opening a business, or businesses that are looking to expand, or even on an international level. If you look at companies who may be in Europe or in Asia that are now growing, and they, no, they are now in a very mature place in their business and looking to be in North America, we don't really promote Philadelphia as a business entity. Yes, we do have challenges from a tax perspective that we've had for a number of years, but we have a number of other assets in our city that make it a great place to live and work. And I think that's something that we have not done historically. Is there going to be some type of way of capturing that type of promotion going forward?
Yes, yes. So, I agree with you. I think that what we've had is a number of different organizations that have been doing that work, but independently, and we have not been doing that in as good coordination as we should. So, that's why sort of in around May of this year, the city convened a bunch of organizations, and we said, "We've been hearing that you want someone to be kind of in, you know, in a coordinating seat to make sure we're all using the same messaging." And that's why we started to come up with consistent value proposition. We did focus groups throughout the summer, and what we heard from people was how great Philadelphia is, our food scene, our restaurant scene, Fairmont Park. We kept hearing we're a hidden gem. And I'm, I, what I would say is that the video and the Philadelphia Delivers brand, I think we should see that as the beginning of a new way of promoting Philadelphia. I think we have a lot of people who want to be cheerleaders, but we need the tools. We need to have the same message, and we're going to start doing what we did with Philadelphia Delivers more. I think a lot of people probably didn't think Philadelphia really had the, the chops to, to host Amazon, and I think what's out there now, even if Amazon doesn't pick us, because we can't really control that, I think a lot of other businesses and a lot of other folks will think of Philadelphia.
But I, I guess the question, concern I have is that, let's look at what's happened in the hospitality space, and then let's transition to the business space, because we have a number of entities that do different types of business marketing. And you said, coming out of this work, the common brand of Philadelphia Delivers. So, you know, from branding, you know, you having a consistent messaging over and over again makes sense and helps with people to identify certain values and thoughts with that brand. That's why, you know, Amazon has the smile. You can just see the smile now. You don't receive the word "Amazon." Nike, you used to say Nike and the swoosh. Now, you just see the swoosh.
Yep.
So, my concern is that when you have all these different entities in the city that do marketing on business promotion, attracting to the city of Philadelphia, that has created, you know, institutional different silos. And so, how do you get some type of coordination to have one consistent theme when you'll have, you may have one organization that's been doing this type of marketing, another organization does that type of marketing, and people tend to get protective of their work and their work history and work product? And so, how do you get these various silos to work together to have a consistent theme in reference to branding the city of Philadelphia from a business-friendly perspective?
I mean, I think it's going to happen because those groups came together, and I said to the groups, "Do you all agree that you want the city in the, in a convenor's seat in terms of everybody-" seat in terms of everybody using a same set of value, of talking points and a same brand? And everybody said, yes, we're glad that we're all here at the table. And we had, you know, all the tourism folks there and hospitality folks. We have the airport, the port. I mean, we also talked to a bunch of businesses, universities, so major anchor institutions. And everybody is in agreement that they want to be using a similar, you know, a same brand and talking points. The Philadelphia Delivers, that's not going to be, that's going to be an interim thing. But I think that's actually a really good, it's going to give us good practice because we came, we came up with a set of talking points in terms of Amazon, how to pitch the city to Amazon. And we came up with a brand. And so we've kind of got a template now for how to do this. And, and the groups agree that, that it's useful. They're, they'll use their own logos and everything for their own organizations, but they agree that we have to use, you know, one identity for the city.
And I guess just to follow up because one, you know, various organizations, you know, they do strategic planning. They spend time and resources to come up with their marketing piece or their brand for their organization. And now we're talking, we're trying to come up with a citywide brand. You're going to have individuals and organizations who have invested those resources in that type of branding for themselves and their perspective on how we should brand Philadelphia. So how are we able to bring all these organizations together collectively? I mean, are there going to be a moment in time when we either use resources to incentivize or use it as a stick approach for some of the organizations who are not willing to come together?
So, so I'll let Sylvie answer that part of the question. But I will, I will say that what we produced for the Amazon RFP really helped galvanize that, that buy-in from all those organizations. Because I think when we did those focus groups over the summer, we had, you know, we had some, you know, we had groups saying, yes, I want to be a part of this. Let's have a common message. When we did this Amazon process, we went through this, we showed people what it, what it looked like when we actually came together and folks sacrificed, you know, egos. They sacrificed staff. They sacrificed time. Some folks sacrificed money to say, this is what we're going to do for one common mission. And we made, I believe, a product good enough to convince others that they should buy into this as well. So that's the other part.
I mean, I guess, my concern is that sounds great. And I know people gave, you know, words. And we had a new initiative, so it was easy for people to come together for this new initiative that was time sensitive to get behind. But when we're saying we're going to going forward, have some consistent branding that this is what we're going to use for the city of Philadelphia and different organizations have invested time in their own thoughts of how the city should be marketed from a business perspective, getting people to give up that type of energy and investment is not always easy. And I know people can say, we're going to do this for something new. But when we're talking about going forward, we're going to use this consistently through our marketing or how we brand the city. That's when it gets a little more challenging. So I'm, I'm glad you have the optimism. I guess I'm somewhat cynical because I've been around here. I know how people get very, and it's human nature to some degree. You get protective of something you invest your time and energy in. And when you're talking about nonprofit organizations and the public sector, you know, they've invested time in a work product and a certain outcome. And so now you have someone saying, no, we're not going to use that. We're going to go in this direction. And because of this kind of silo mentality, unfortunately, people become, find ways to create roadblocks on why they can't do what they said they would do for Amazon, but now we can't, for whatever reason, now work together on this new initiative in reference to a central or, or theme of branding for the city.
I'm cautiously optimistic because all of these folks have been coming to the table. And we've, we've kind of reiterated and reaffirmed numerous times that we're going to, that we are going to come up with a brand that we all share. And we actually haven't been saying, you need to like put your, your logo aside. And there's, there's a difference too between a brand and a campaign. So like, a Visit Philly can do the XOXO campaign, but we have one brand. So we're definitely not telling people like, get rid of your stuff. I mean, you've got Matt Cabree from Select, he'll be up here next. And Select is one of our partners that markets the city and they're on board. PIDC is on board. PHLCBB, Visit Philly are on board. Campus Philly. And then all the, I mean, all these agencies that we talk to very, very regularly. So I think we'll get there.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as far as comparison to other cities that are doing this, do we see, they gave us a bunch of check marks to check off. And it seems like Philadelphia meets those check marks. But the other, the last, and I guess the, the best thing is then, what are the incentives? And it seems like there's other municipalities willing to give more incentives than the city is. Do we think Amazon is actually, we know they want the incentives to go in and the best offer, but are they really interested in checking off all those boxes or how do they make the most money?
It's a mystery to us. In our work meetings, we always try to figure out, are they looking for talent? Are they looking for the incentives? Like, what is their breaking, like, what's the deal breaker here? And we just presented our city the best we could to respond to that. We didn't, we, we sort of didn't say, this is what we think, so we're going to run with this. We highlighted four categories, I believe, the talent, incentives.
Livability.
Livability.
Logistics.
And logistics. So we just harnessed what our strengths were and presented that. And if, if it meets what they're looking for, because it's, they, they, they didn't give us a lot of feedback through the process, so it's hard to tell like precisely where their deal was going to make it or break it. So we just presented ourselves as best we could.
Okay, that, I mean, that's fair. I think. That's sort of what we got out of it. And just by looking at some of the other offers, again, I don't think we gave away the house. We, it was a pretty good offer. But I think the end decision would be up to them is what, do they really want the livability, walkability, talent?
Or the talent, yeah.
Or do they really want the best tax break they could get?
I don't know.
And I guess we'll find out that once they make a decision.
Yeah.
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 Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmen. That appears to be all of the questions for this particular panel. I want to thank you all very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
And good luck to us all. Our second panel, Ann Nevins, Matt Cabree, and Rakia Reynolds. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. You may self-select in terms of who shall go first.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Council President and the members of City Council. My name is Ann Boverd Nevins, and I'm Senior Vice President for Marketing and Business Development at PIDC, Philadelphia's Public Private Economic Development Corporation. I appreciate the opportunity to offer testimony today on Resolution 170912. I am delighted to be a part of this panel with Matt Cabree of Select Greater Philadelphia and Rakia Reynolds of Sky Blue Media, who both played key roles during the Amazon HQ2 bid. As you already know, PIDC is a private, nonprofit corporation created in 1958 as a partnership between the City of Philadelphia and the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce. We are blessed to have both Councilwoman Blackwell and Councilwoman Johnson as members of our Executive Committee and Board of Directors. We invest public and private resources in small business growth, community-based development, and real estate developments that create jobs, revitalize neighborhoods, and drive growth to every corner of Philadelphia. We support the efforts of the City of Philadelphia Department of Commerce and Select Greater Philadelphia to attract new businesses to our city by deploying our financing and real estate resources and market knowledge. PIDC was proud to play a leading role in the Amazon HQ2 bid with our President John Grady serving as co-chair of the core team alongside Commerce Director Epps. One of the most exciting outcomes of the bid process was the immediate and sustained outpouring of support from across Philadelphia's business and civic community, as well as the broader community of our citizens. As soon as the HQ2 RFP was released to the public, members of the core team began receiving calls and emails offering support for a Philadelphia bid. We quickly decided on the Philly Delivers hashtag to engage the public and set up a web portal through which more than 300 forms offering suggestions and messages of support were submitted. Most impressively, Philadelphia was able to deliver both a resolution of the City Council of Philadelphia and a letter signed by more than 160 regional CEOs in support of our bid within one week of the RFP's release. As the bid progressed, the core team worked with key stakeholder groups to provide updates and generate ideas. The stakeholder groups included the regional business community at large, the technology sector, small businesses, and our ethnic chambers of commerce, city council members and staff, university students, the creative business community, and more. For example, we sent a survey to technology startups, asking them to share how being located in Philadelphia has helped their company to thrive, and that received more than 90 responses. We were also able to secure a letter to Amazon from more than 65 university presidents from throughout our region, touting the strength of our colleges as a key part of Philadelphia's talent story. Finally, as we submitted Philadelphia's response to Amazon for HQ2, we engaged the general public to support the bid in a strategic way. We created a theme for each day of the week leading up to the RFP deadline, focusing on each of our key messages, talent, logistics, and livability. We prepared and distributed sample tweets and social media posts aligned with these messages, timed with the release of a video for each theme that was included as part of the Amazon response. On October 19th, we released a significant portion of Philadelphia's submission to Amazon to the public through the public.philadelphidelivers.com website. Since its launch, the website has received more than 28,000 visits. All of the core team members are strongly committed to taking the momentum and energy that has been generated by the Amazon HQ2 bid process and harnessing that to help retain and grow the diverse businesses which are already located in Philadelphia, as well as to attract new companies. We will utilize the significant assets, including multiple videos, data maps, and research developed during this process to tell Philadelphia's story as a place of work. We appreciate the support and spotlight that you are shining on our opportunity to leverage the momentum generated by the Amazon HQ2 bid process to continue to drive the growth of our city. Thank you for this opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks for your testimony. Please, President.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmen, and Councilwomen. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to share the creative process that we applied to the Amazon bid. My name is Rakia Reynolds, founder and CEO of Sky Blue Media, a Philadelphia-based communications agency. I'm also the Entrepreneur Residence for Visit Philadelphia, and I served as the Creative Director for the Amazon bid. As a creative, I believe in the power of collaborative storytelling to bring a community together. Between the 30-plus stakeholders that we interviewed, the story maps that were created, and the five videos we developed, we were able to convey the essence of our great city to Amazon and the greater public. Some of the main aspects we wanted to highlight in the Philadelphia Delivers campaign were the city's exceptional diversity, our bustling tech and innovation scene, and the urban renaissance we are experiencing, experiencing. My involvement and work in this process was centered around storytelling and storytelling the attributes of the Philadelphia region. Our goal was to create a website that gave the viewer an immersive media experience to showcase the diversity of Philadelphia, not just race and gender, but also verticals such as art, culture, work-life harmony, balance, and the people who are the hands behind the brand of Philadelphia. With high-definition quality landscape and aerial digital footage, the website artistically reflects that Philadelphia is an international gateway perfectly suited for growing entrepreneurs, businesses, academic leaders, innovators, and change makers. The website colors were strategically chosen to mirror the Philly love letters created by Philadelphia native Steve Powers with a subtle nod to the Amazon colors. The dominant colors of blue and the hues on the website, which were blue, were, represents trust, honesty, and sincerity. And we wanted to be sincere in our efforts and give people a 360-degree perspective of what Philadelphia has to offer. As Creative Director, the goal was to represent the rich history of Philadelphia, the current enhanced way of living, and all of the vibrant, convenient, fast-increasing opportunities contained within the boundaries of this urban city. To adequately represent Philadelphia to its maximum potential, over a three-week time span, the video team and I interviewed 35 people, CEOs, students, residents, presidents of colleges and universities, and more. We wanted to talk to innovators that have disrupted healthcare, technology, telecommunications, food and beverage industries, and those who had insight around what Philadelphia has to contribute to the global community. To stay aligned with the vision of highlighting the diversity of Philadelphia, we sought out and interviewed minority executives, women, and individuals of color. With the exponential growth potential Philadelphia has to offer, representing women and people of color in our assets demonstrates our city's inclusivity, which will in turn entice millennials to want to stay, grow, and develop in cities post-graduation. Philadelphia has a highly educated and diverse regional workforce fueled by top-ranked universities. With a dynamic technology sector, access to technical talent, and a fast-increasing millennial population, we attempted to display this through the website and the infinite growth potential of Philadelphia. Philadelphia is a world-class city that has received national recognition for its diversity, affordability, and quality of life with must-see amenities, including the art scene, restaurants, walkability, bike-friendly streets, outdoor recreation, and public and green spaces. These aspects of the city meet Amazon's RFP requirements and fit within Amazon's business community vision. Being involved in this plan brought to my remembrance how great the city of Philadelphia is and how it has set a foundation for the businesswoman I am today. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Rakia. Good afternoon, everyone. Council members, Council President, thank you for the opportunity to share insights and suggestions as it relates to improving the business climate in Philadelphia and ways we can enhance our marketing strategies to attract new businesses to the city and the region. I'm Matt Cabree, and I lead Select Greater Philadelphia, a council of the Chamber of Commerce for Greater Philadelphia. Select is considered the business attraction organization for the 11-county region of northern Delaware, southern New Jersey, and southeastern Pennsylvania. We are a nonprofit entity focused on highlighting Greater Philadelphia's unique business assets to a global audience and to a regional audience, too, with the ultimate goal of growing the economic vibrancy of our collective community through attracting new businesses and new jobs to our Greater Philadelphia neighborhood. We at Select believe that when we work, think, and act as a unified, collaborative community across our 11-county region, we are stronger and we have a more compelling and attractive message to communicate with decision-makers from around the world. While we tell the story of the incredible business assets we have across our region, talent, transportation, infrastructure, quality of life, and more, there's no doubt that the heartbeat of our collective community is the city of Philadelphia. With regards to the Amazon HQ2 RFP response, we are proud to have worked hand-in-hand with the core team and to help guide an approach that was more regional and collaborative, inviting engagement and unprecedented support from leaders in all 11 counties, including each member of this city council. With regards to improving the business climate of Philadelphia, we, working through each of you as our legislative leaders, have a tremendous opportunity to transform the image and reputation of the city as a place to establish and grow a business. You have already started this important work through the Committee on Regulatory Reform and Review, co-chaired by Commerce Director Epps, Chamber President Rob Wonderling, and Councilman Derek Green. I encourage each of you to continue working in this direction of approaching your legislative actions by looking through the lens of business, business growth and job creation. In brief, when a business environment is perceived to be overly and unnecessarily regulated and restricted, we give decision-makers a reason to select an alternative location. Let's work to welcome companies and help them to grow in Philadelphia instead of giving them reasons to leave the city. Specific examples include a reduction in the business income and receipt tax, reduction in time required to obtain necessary business permits with a money-backed guarantee for failure to do so, efforts to collect delinquent taxes through tax lien securitization, and procurement reform. With regards to enhancing our city's marketing strategies, regardless of the outcome of the Amazon HQ2 proposal campaign, I encourage all of us to work collectively to develop dedicated funding to support business attraction, similar to the structure and success that we have seen as a city and a region in the meetings and conventions and tourism space. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'm happy to offer additional insights and answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President Clark. First, I want to start with Ms. Reynolds, and I'll also thank all of you for your testimony this afternoon. Ms. Reynolds, I know from your business background, you have a client perspective that takes you to a number of different cities throughout the nation. And I'm curious, from your perspective, your observations, what have you seen from activities that from the public sector, cities have done to attract businesses, especially more creative or millennial-based businesses? What type of efforts have you seen at maybe the local level of municipalities doing efforts to attract businesses?
Thank you. So what I've seen in other cities is that if the messaging and the, the assets are there, people just need to know about the, the assets and the efforts that are being worked on. So in cities that I've traveled to and other cities that I work with, I've seen a lot of cities. cities equip businesses with the necessary assets they need. So for example, how to talk about the cities, the best place for businesses to live, work, and play, and for some of the millennial and creative businesses that come to other cities, their responses are, "This is why you should live here, this is why you should work here, and this is how you can raise your children here." So I think what they do is they offer things that are just outside of their businesses, but because millennial and creative businesses, and research has shown this, they want to live great lives and they want to live a life where they're impacting their respective cities or towns, they show them the ways to do that, and it's all through their messaging. And I'm speaking specifically about other cities like Austin that I work and travel to.
And when you say "show them the way," are you saying are they providing information in reference to quiet life amenities, or is it more just a marketing branding perspective of, "This is Austin, this is San Antonio, this is Miami, you know, come work here because of ABC," or is it more of, "Okay, come here and this is where you can go to, you know, start your business," or "This is where you can go to buy a house," or other type of things?
So some of these cities offer online resource guides, and the online resource guides will tell you how to, you know, start a business, all the way up to, "These are the kinds of restaurants you should be going to." So they sort of look at the archetype of, "This is your business profile, and if you're starting a creative business, or if you're starting a technology business, here's an online resource guide that fits you." So we've started some of those efforts, we worked on something with Visit Philadelphia, an online toolkit to say, "Here's what you'd be interested in the art community, here's how you could be engaging in the business community, and then from an education standpoint, here's how it could appeal to you." So I think it's messaging on both sides of what you just said. It's, "Here's what you can do in the business standpoint, and then this is what you do from a work-life business standpoint."
And is that from a one-stop-shop approach, like if you go to austin.gov or xyz.gov, you can go to that website and you immediately are directed to what you may need, or do you have to go through multiple websites to get there?
You have to go through multiple websites in order to get there. I will say that there is one city in Oslo, Norway, that has, I would say they've sort of perfected the way to attract businesses, and they've done that by creating a downloadable toolkit. And that toolkit is your online resource guide, and what they've done is, they also have incorporated artificial intelligence and social listening, so you can go in and you can fill something out and say, "This is the kind of business I have, these are my interests," and it will sort of aggregate all of this content to sort of show you and talk to you about what you could be doing in the business community and how you could have this work-life balance.
And is that to like an app concept where you go to their website, you download an app, and it's kind of directing you based on the type of business you may need, and it'll direct you to type of services?
It's not an app. You have to go to the website, and what they've created is a microsite. So the microsite will take you to another site, and that site is all about work-life and business. But I will say that the strengths, I mean, all of the cities that I've sort of researched, they do have, there are some cavities in what they're doing, and I think it's great that we're able to see those cavities so that we know how to fill the holes. But I think what speaks best to some of the examples that I've given is really just giving as much information as possible for the work-life balance because everybody's trying to figure that out.
And Mr. Cabree, you talked about dedicated funding similar to what we have in the hospitality and tourism. Could you give me some more perspective on what you're envisioning from a dedicated funding? I know in years past, you know, we used to have economic stimulus dollars for certain initiatives, so what type of dedicating funding structure are you talking about?
Sure. I'm really referring mostly, Councilmen, to the marketing approach, the storytelling, the attractiveness of awareness building with different audiences at the national and international level, similar to what we have structured in the tourism and meetings and convention space. So for example, we at Select Greater Philadelphia, we're a council of our chamber, we're a small shop, four-and-a-half full-time people, two-and-a-half part-time folks who have tentacles into the rest of our chamber family. All of our funding, for the most part, comes from people who believe in what we do. So half of our role was fundraising to secure our budget to then go out and create marketing initiatives, which is a little bit different than what we see in some of the other spaces when it comes to tourism and marketing. So if we could identify a resource that would allow us to create robust marketing and communication plans similar to what we see in the tourism, meetings, and convention space, we would have a more successful approach, I believe, to telling the Greater Philadelphia story and specifically the southeastern Pennsylvania story which centers around Philadelphia County.
Are there examples in other jurisdictions where funds have been dedicated for marketing from a business perspective?
Yes. It's not unusual for cities, regions, municipalities to have dedicated funding through government sources. What's unique about Select is we are really a nonprofit organization that is focused on engaging the business community. Business leaders will invest in our work, and then we will invite them to help tell the story of our success. But other regions may be funded directly by a city, a state, a region. It may be through a tax structure, it may be through a budget allocation, but there is the ability to allow those entities to focus solely on the task at hand of marketing the region, hosting guests from outside the region, and less worry frankly on funding your operation on a regular basis.
You brought up parallels between business marketing and hospital and tourism initiatives, and I think of Visit Philadelphia or GPTMC from the perspective of Visit Philly and some of their campaigns they've had. But I think the distinction I've seen, and I'm curious on how Select Greater Philadelphia deals with this issue, is that the marketing and tourism aspects I see for the city of Philadelphia tend to draw people and focus on the city, because it seems like although there are other either convention and visitor bureaus for outside of Philadelphia, but collectively if Philadelphia does well, there's spillover into those other jurisdictions. So if we have a major event from a hotel room perspective, other jurisdictions around the city will benefit from that. However, I see somewhat of a different perspective when it comes to business attraction because, you know, the city of Philadelphia is competing with King of Prussia, competing with other chambers of commerce and other entities outside of the city itself. So how do you balance that when you're trying, I mean, because I look at Select Greater Philadelphia, so you're not just, you're really attracting people to the region.
That's right.
Whereas from a hospitality and tourism perspective, they're attracting people to the city that's going to spill over benefits into the region. So, and that causes somewhat of a, I don't want to say contradictory, but a tension because of the fact that, you know, we are focused here on the city of Philadelphia, although it does benefit the region, but, you know, you have entities that are trying to attract people to their area which is outside of the city, and so how do you deal with that tension?
Yeah. It's a collective community is the way I like to look at it, and I encourage folks to think of Greater Philadelphia as one big neighborhood. To your point, if a business chooses to establish its operations in Newcastle County, Delaware, or Chester County, Pennsylvania, or Philadelphia County, Pennsylvania, the entire region benefits because folks will not only be living and working in the area, some will choose, even if a company chooses to establish operations in one county, they'll live in other counties. They'll shop, they'll use leisure activities and restaurants and other kinds of engagement across the entire region. So we like to look at it as a, everybody will benefit regardless of where a business ultimately chooses to establish operations.
And my last question, and this actually is for Ms. Nevins, and I hopefully be able to answer this question. In reference to the workforce, and one of the concerns, talking with some of my colleagues in National League Cities from Seattle and King County, they have a number of jobs that are currently open at Amazon, and they have a real challenge in trying to fill those positions. And considering the issues we have here in the city of Philadelphia, especially in reference to poverty and education, what steps if we are able to bring in Amazon to the city of Philadelphia? What steps are we taking to provide opportunities to help train and work within our current education system to provide those type of opportunities and training for young people so they be prepared for the jobs if Amazon does come? Because I think one of the things that too often happens is that we wait until after the fact when we should be preparing the pipeline now and not waiting to a situation in the future. So what steps are we taking, and something that may have even come out of this process to help better prepare our young people for an Amazon or other companies that are in the city right now to prepare for those jobs in the future?
That's a great question because I think that is one of the things that we learned a lot about during the Amazon bid process was where we have strengths and weaknesses in terms of our workforce and our pipeline to be able to fill those jobs in the future. I think one thing that we want to keep in mind on the positive side in terms of how could we start to fill those jobs today if Amazon were to choose to come here immediately? And one of the things, you know, that we've talked about, I think this came up a little bit on the prior panel, is just in terms of the overall size of our market. So with a regional population in just the 12 counties of more than 6 million people, if you extend that to about the 150-mile radius surrounding Philadelphia, you've actually got 10 million people within that radius that have bachelor's degrees or higher. And so from an immediate perspective of being able to meet the talent needs for Amazon, we thought that that's actually a great strength of our location on the northeast corridor and really being central between New York and DC. Not only are we able to draw on our regional population and our city population as that workforce, but also draw from a broader radius. So that's one of the things that we touted in the proposal as a strength today, but I think we also use this as an opportunity to uncover some of the areas where we're not as strong. One of those, again, kind of that next level of pipeline would be, you know, students that are in college today in the region. And Philadelphia is still a net exporter of technical talent, so we are graduating more people today with technical skills and degrees than we are hiring them here. And so that is something where if we had another major employer in that technology sector, we could retain even more of the tech talent that we're currently educating here and then sending to other places. And then, you know, taking it down to the next level and thinking about the kids who are maybe in middle school today that could be looking for those jobs at Amazon in 10 to 15 years, and what do we need to do to really be prepared or to help them be prepared for those positions? I think a lot of it is investing in STEM education and specifically in computer science education. In K through 12, there was an exciting announcement last week about CS4 Philly, which is a new initiative focused specifically on that, where I think, you know, we have a lot of opportunities within the city schools themselves, and then also from a, you know, bringing in partners from a regional perspective, too, to really focus on computer science and STEM education as early as possible, and that's what will help prepare that next generation of workforce.
I guess just a concern is that I could, I mean, what would you say to a citizen that, you know, lives here in the city of Philadelphia, has a child in the school district like I do, and we're using possibly tax dollars and incentives from the city of Philadelphia to attract Amazon, but then the jobs that Amazon's going to be providing, when you're talking about a regional perspective, could possibly going to people outside the city? And so if I'm paying my taxes and I'm paying into the city and I want to see opportunities for other young people that look like my son or daughter or relative or neighbor, I think we need to be really careful about what steps we're taking to make sure that the citizens in the city of Philadelphia are being prepared for those jobs and we're not just attracting people from outside the city for that opportunity.
Yep, absolutely, and I think we have to balance between, you know, what are we selling to Amazon today, because they're obviously looking for a place that can accommodate the, you know, technical and skill needs that they have from day one, and I think we want to demonstrate that Philadelphia is a place where they can do that now. But I think what we want to also do is take this opportunity to be strategic. I likewise have a son in the public school system in Philly as well, and, you know, to take the opportunity for that the increased, you know, tax revenue and tax base that's a net positive that Amazon would ultimately generate for Philadelphia, to be able to invest in the kinds of programs, whether, you know, directly in schools, whether, you know, some of the interesting things that are happening even in adult education around coding and skills development outside of the public education system, to be able to ready that workforce as soon as possible to take advantage of whatever job opportunities either Amazon or any other company might offer.
Thank you. Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Councilman. And I agree with you, Ann, you know, let's, you know, we have identified some of our shortcomings and have begun to address them in a collective manner, which I think is incredible, incredibly resourceful, and I think we do have a model for success. But focusing in on the positives is, which I think, you know, when we bring in our different agencies in Select Greater Philadelphia and the great branding, you know, that we're doing, I think the positives are the attraction. And on the back end, you know, collectively, I think we're in a better position than we've ever had been, you know, as long as we keep the momentum moving forward and keep the opportunities of growing jobs here in the city, and, you know, the brain drain retention is what it used to be called. So good job and keep up the good work. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Chairman Heenan. Good afternoon. I have a couple of questions I just wanted to ask, and I agree, I know Bob Mau's very much behind CS4, computer science for all schools, and it has to be K through 12, but at least we're doing some, we're doing some work already in the school systems and technology, as all of you know. One out of 10 new jobs in Philadelphia, I'm sorry, one out of four new jobs in Philadelphia in the last 10 years are technology-based. So that's our future. A couple of questions. On the top 20 cities, and I'm not sure this is for you, Ann, or it might be for Sylvie in the back there, I'd like to know what percentage of other top cities are non-paying real estate tax entities compared to paying taxes? In Philadelphia, basically, when you look at our real estate tax base, 30% does not pay tax, and that puts the burden on other businesses. I'd like to see how we compare to 20 other cities of our size. Someone told me recently that we may be the highest percentage of eds and meds of any major city in the country, and I'm not sure that's accurate, but I would like to see that chart against other cities, because I do think, well, I love eds and meds, but it is an issue when we're looking at dollars. The second question I had was, of the top 20 cities, going back to the business-friendly environment, could we take our five or 10 growth industries in this city, maybe it's tech, I don't know if it's law firms, even though, I guess law firms is growing, it's a good thing, and manufacturing and other businesses, and compare the tax burden for those companies in Philadelphia to the other 10 or 19 other, 20 or comparing to 20 cities or 10 cities? What would it be like to open a tech firm, for example, in Austin, and what's it like in New York, what's it like in Seattle, what's it like in Atlanta compared to Philadelphia? So that we can specifically address if we're high, what we need to do to make us more attractive? Okay, that's all my questions for today.
Okay, great. I'll work with Sylvie and we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, I know you guys will do it, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chairman.
Or Councilman, the chair recognizes Councilwoman blonde Ellen Reynolds Brown.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, and thank you very, very much for your testimony and the role you played in this important submission and huge unprecedented business opportunity for our city. Mr. Matt?
Cabree.
Cabree, thank you very much. Can you please speak to, you mentioned three-quarters of the way down in your testimony that specific examples of how we can better grow Philadelphia lies in examples such as, and you include procurement reform. What type of procurement reform is Select Philadelphia currently involved in or dedicated to?
Select Greater Philadelphia is not specifically dedicated to procurement reform specifically. It's an area of recommendation that as a legislative body in a regulatory environment, when we make procurement processes smoother, that it can enhance engagement from businesses who are already currently here to allow them to grow and potentially attract other businesses who may not otherwise consider locating operations in the city of Philadelphia.
Do you believe that we as a city can and should do better since it's mentioned here as one of the focus areas?
I do believe we can all do better when it comes to providing a process that is more user-friendly and smoother.
Okay. And then you mentioned the, to develop a dedicated funding to support business attraction. Can you cite a couple of other cities that actually have a dedicated funding source for business attraction? And doesn't the Department of Commerce do this in some type of way already?
Yes, the Department of Commerce does it for the city of Philadelphia, that's correct. Yes, and I can get back to you on other cities that may have a dedicated funding source. Yeah.
Okay, because that's mentioned here as something we could work collectively to develop.
Right.
And so knowing how other cities figured it out is always instructive.
Absolutely.
So if you could get that information to the president and I think it was Councilman Bill Green, I mean Derek Green?
Yes.
Who put forth this resolution. Who put forth this resolution. To Ms. Rakea Reynolds, the phenomenal Rakea Reynolds, I'm biased, and I can say that. I want to thank you and express how I appreciate your focus on diversity and inclusion. It does matter in this new world order. How did the core team incorporate diversity and inclusion in its design approach?
In the design approach? So we met as a team, and the web developer is a, his name is Mark Coleman, and he is a certified minority-owned business, LGBTQ business as well. So I think when we all came to the table, we looked at not only the people that we wanted to highlight in the videos and on the website, but we started with the team who was going to be building them. So I think when you start at, you start at that core level of the team that's going to be working on it, it makes more of a world of a difference when you start to communicate some of those messages. So at the core, the core team decided on the vendors, and then the vendors then worked together in that collaborative environment to sort of work on the storytelling of the people that were going to be the voices for the proposal.
Very, very encouraging. To Ms. Ann Bovard, pronounce your name for me.
Bovard Nevins.
Bovard Nevins. In your testimony, you, third paragraph down, what type of support did the business community offer? You say that there was a sustained outpouring of support from across Philadelphia business and civic community. Discuss that a bit further for us.
Sure, absolutely. So I would say the common question was, how can I help? And so depending on, you know, who was, who was asking, we had a couple of set talking points that we would, that we would tell people. The first thing was, be positive. So if you want to try to help Philadelphia's bid, the number one thing that we told people in the business community to do was to find, you know, stories about things that were happening in their, in their business in Philadelphia, promote them on social media, use the PhillyDelivers hashtag, and, you know, do everything that they could to keep a positive momentum about things that are happening in our city. And then the second thing was, you know, we said there's a lot of folks that either do business with Amazon, that might know people that work there, and to the extent that people were able to use their own personal networks to reach into the company and either glean insights for us that might be valuable about how we should approach them, how we should craft our message, or use their own personal networks to deliver a personalized positive message about Philadelphia to those folks. Those were the main things that we asked people to do in response to that main question, which was, how can I help?
And I guess your office was probably the glue, the thread that held all that together, is that fair to say?
Well, we worked in a really close partnership, so Select Greater Philadelphia was very helpful with that, given their ties to the regional business community via the Chamber and the Commerce Department as well. So we really sort of worked as a, as a collective team.
Okay.
And Councilwoman, can I add to that, if you're okay? I will share with you, and you have to come back to the morning of Thursday, September 7th, which is when Amazon took a very unusual step in publicly announcing their desire to establish a second headquarters somewhere in North America. They issued a press release, which is really unusual for a business attraction, economic development type of process. Within 24 hours, to Ann's point, we were receiving calls from the business community asking, how can we help? Within 48 hours, we had crafted a letter to leadership at Amazon outlining for them the fit that Greater Philadelphia has for their project, everything from talent to cost of doing business and quality of life and cost of living, et cetera. That letter, within another 48 hours, was signed by just over 150 business and civic leaders from across Greater Philadelphia, some who live and work in the city of Philadelphia, and some who call Greater Philadelphia home but may not actually be in the city of Philadelphia proper. And it was a great outpouring of support. From that came a more defined cascading of desire to help, and we had smaller calls with CEOs from companies, again, around the region who wanted to get involved in some way, and to Ann's point, actively reached out to leadership at Amazon to engage in conversations, set up meetings, allow us to collect some information as best we could through this process. So it was a real collective and community-wide approach.
Coordinated.
Really reassuring and inspiring.
I bet. I bet the energy was contagious.
For sure.
For those few weeks that you worked on that. Lastly, on page two of your testimony, you say, "We will utilize these significant assets, including multiple videos, data maps, and research." So speak to the videos, which is, you know, a visual type of experience, and what type of research and data did you pull together to sort of build a case for why Philadelphia would be a great location?
So the research was a really important component of how we approached the bid. One of the things that we learned from our research about Amazon was that they are very analytical, they're very focused on data, and they want information that is accurate and not sugar-coated, or to gloss over anything. And so we spent a lot of time really drilling into what are Philadelphia's strengths, both regionally and as a city, that would tell the story that we wanted to tell to Amazon in a way that was really accurate and data-driven and, you know, truthful. And then we decided to put a lot of that information out on the website that we created and make that available for the public, not just for Amazon. And so a lot of what you see in the data maps that are on the website in terms of statistics about our population, about our colleges and universities, about businesses that are located in the region, about our recreational amenities, cultural attractions, all of these things, to try to tell that story with numbers and data and visualization, we are going to be able to use going forward for non-Amazon-specific business attraction and retention opportunities. We think that the website will have a life beyond just this project. We're actually working right now and working closely with Rakea and the rest of the creative team to develop a scope of work to, as I think Sylvie put it in the past panel, de-Amazonify, so not make the website just specific to Amazon, take out some of those specific references, and make it available as a business attraction tool much more broadly.
Sure. Councilman Bill Green Lee and I were just speaking about how important it is for members of the business community to, can do, what they can do to promote our Philadelphia business community, because, I mean, I don't, whatever the top 10 cities are, they too, I'm sure, have flaws. And so for us to focus on, well, many of us only seeing the glass as half-full, I mean, half-empty, doesn't go a mighty long way. If we could focus on it being half-full, then we might be able to begin to silence the noise that we are not a business-friendly city. Because if you stack that against other amenities that we offer, and you place that in the equation where you have a business-friendly city, will the two be equal? I don't know. It's, you know, something to think about. Thank you all very, very much for your work.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair now recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Chairman Heenan. A couple, two more questions, then I'm done. Number one, this is for you, Mr. Cavery, on reduction in the BERT tax. Does the Select Philadelphia have an alternative?
Not at this time, but I can follow back up with you.
Okay, we'd love to hear what the alternative is, because I agree with you on the BERT. The net income and gross receipts are killers for companies. I totally agree. So we'd love to hear the alternative, keeping it revenue-neutral. And just to mention, I can't, I can't help myself, but you're endorsing the collection of delinquent taxes, just want to take a minute and just address that for a moment. I don't know if your organization is aware that we have 67,000 delinquent properties right now, totaling with interest and penalties $486 million in delinquent real estate taxes, of which of the 67,000 properties, 16,000 are owner-occupied.
16,000.
16,000 are owner-occupied, 51,000 are not owner-occupied. They're commercial, industrial investors who have chosen not to pay us for real estate taxes. The 16,000, every owner in the city of Philadelphia is eligible for UPA, they have to qualify for it financially, but everyone can be a part of UPA if they qualify financially. So my, I want to make sure you're aware that UPA payments, owner-occupied payment agreement, if they qualify, can pay as little as $25 per month for real estate taxes, which is amazing, most, best program in the country. And if revenue determines they can't pay $25 a month for real estate taxes, they can pay $0 a month for real estate taxes. So I just want to make sure your organization knows that this is a program that goes after those who choose not to pay, not those who can't afford to pay.
Yes, I'm aware of that, yeah.
Okay.
And I would encourage that to continue, and, you know, thinking of other municipalities across the region, I don't think there's other municipalities that would allow that kind of environment to continue, frankly. There's a process in place to put liens in and to refer to the appropriate authorities through a tax process whenever a business, or frankly, an individual, a homeowner, is delinquent in their, in a variety of their obligations when it comes to taxes and other kinds of utility billing and things like, things like that. So why we would allow that to occur in any of our municipalities, including the city of Philadelphia, is something that needs to be addressed, as this body is.
And thank you for your endorsement, thank you for your testimony today. Also, I want to again thank this panel, PIDC and Chamber of Commerce and every, all the organizations. I think you guys did a phenomenal job with the Amazon bid.
Thank you. Councilman, if there, if you would, I would love to offer a couple other perspectives that are specific to Select, or Select but also to Amazon as well, that might be helpful for all of us, but I won't take up too much more time. Is that appropriate?
You may.
Thank you. I did just want to add briefly, and this came up in conversation earlier with Councilman Green's comments, and as a native to the Overbrook neighborhood in West Philadelphia and a product of our Philadelphia public and private schools and parochial schools, I do want to share that, and it touches a little bit on Councilwoman Reynolds' comment as well, that we need to make a concerted effort to highlight and accentuate the positive as opposed to the negative. It's often brought up in conversation when we're talking about the strengths of the region, the quality of education specifically in the city, and that's one of the reasons why the region is such a strong story. However, we have such success in the city of Philadelphia when it comes to education that we often don't talk about. This oftentimes is human nature. We always go right to the negative as opposed to accentuating the positive. And it's not unusual for us to get that kind of question from business leaders who are thinking about operations somewhere in the city of Philadelphia. And we immediately point out at Select Greater Philadelphia that the number-one high school in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is right here in the city of Philadelphia. Most people don't know that, they focus on all of the challenges associated and not necessarily the progress that has been made. In a more general way, when it comes to Select, and it does tie into Amazon to a certain extent, it's important for us to auto-appreciate that there are several different audiences that we generally are trying to communicate with when we're doing business attraction. And it centers on site selectors, there's a whole industry of folks whose whole job is to help companies establish new operations somewhere around the world and why. So that's one important audience that we look to cultivate. The second is, inside an organization, there is a real estate or facilities lead, a leadership team member, whether it's a chief operating officer or the CEO themselves. That's the audience that we typically are trying to influence and raise awareness, at the very least to have them come and visit and think about Greater Philadelphia and the city specifically. And once we can reach that audience, we're in a much better place. Historically, what has happened and what we've learned in the business attraction and economic development spaces, some of these leaders would not even have Philadelphia on their list of a place to consider. That message over the past decade or so has started to change. And that's why we're seeing organizations like Amazon engage in conversations with Philadelphia and other cities or other organizations wanting to talk about this community as a place to do business as well, which is a real positive, and we need to continue to cultivate those very targeted, niche relationships with those key influencers of site selectors, real estate professionals, and inside facilities leaders as well, to tell our story. Lastly, I do want folks to appreciate when it comes to the Amazon process itself, I think it's important for folks to appreciate, it's not always about incentives. That's not, generally speaking, the first topic on the list of initiatives for organizations. If you look at the RFP for Amazon, incentives are in there, but they're not the number one. It's talent, it's quality of life, it's cost of doing business. And at the, on page seven of the RFP, second to last paragraph, I'm paraphrasing, "We look forward to having conversations with you about creative ways to develop incentive packages." So they're not leading with an incentive conversation, and any good site selector will tell you that incentives, while they're important, they play a part in some of these opportunities, it's talent, it's quality of life, it's transportation infrastructure that companies take into consideration first. And if we can do a better job, as been articulated here, in telling some of those stories, we'll be in a much better place in the long run. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Philadelphia certainly is a place to work, eat, sleep, and eat, and Philadelphia is first. So thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else here that wishes to testify on Resolution 170912? That being none, I want to thank the lead sponsor, Councilman Green, and all those of council who participated here today and signed onto this resolution, because I think it's an important and welcome conversation. With that, thank you all, and we will recess this committee of hold to call in a chair. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thanks.